I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna do roll call, Mr. Villarreal.
Present.
Mr. Ramirez.
Present.
Mr. Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Peña.
I'm present.
And myself, Elisa Velazquez, is present as well. Section one, meeting called to order for the purpose of canvassing.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. We are gonna have the canvassing of the election. I will be reciting the official results of the election. With regards to the official results, this is done after we do the provisional ballots, and obviously, the results that were given on election night were the unofficial until the ballot board met to consider the provisional ballots. I can inform the board that of the provisional ballots, there were only 23 provisional ballots. Of those 23, 15 were not registered to vote, and only eight were considered by the ballot board, because those individuals were in fact registered to vote prior to the November 3rd election date. The results are as follows. For place number one, John A. Pope IV, the total was 4,464. For place number one, Mr. Juan Diego Gonzalez, the total was 571. The total for place number one, Mr. Danny Sines, the total was 4,126. With regards to place number two, Mr. Jay Peña had a total of 4,948. With regards to place number two, Mr. Roberto C. Flores, the total was 4,120. With regards to place number four, Mr. Elisa Velazquez Jr., his total was 4,725. With regards to place number four, Encarnacion Chonito Sines III, his total was 4,402. And as for place number five, Rogelio Roger Olivares, his total was 4,176. And place number five, Dr. Daria or Dr. B. Babino, her total was 4,992. And that, of course, encompassed the early voting, including the mail-in ballots, Election Day, and the provisional. These are the official results. I wish you all the best, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Section number two, canvas election. Item number one, canvas election returns of the school board of trustees election of November 3rd, 2020, and approval of the order declaring results of trustee's elections.
Mr. President, I think that's what we just did, so that covers six.
That's...
That's item number one.
Okay. Item number two, signing of officer's statements.
Hold on. Don't we have to approve that item?
We have to approve item number one, Mr. Ramon Tallo.
Yes, you just have an order declaring that it should be approved. I move that we approve item number one, the canvas election returns of the school board of trustee elections on November 3rd, 2020, and approval of the order declaring results of trustee elections as presented in our...
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number two, signing of officer's statements.
With regarding to the signing of the officer's statements, you all can do them shortly. You should have a copy of it. That will be filed with the superintendent's office and the school secretary, Mrs. Becky Barra. So please, when you have an opportunity, please sign those. And that applies to the incoming board members.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
No.
It's not a motion item.
It's not a motion item. Item number three, administration of oath of office of new board members.
Mr. President, I think the best way to do it is one by one, and I believe John A.
Start by raising your right hand. I...
I.
...declare that I will faithfully execute the duties of school board trustee of Rio Grande City CISD.
That I will faithfully execute the duty.
Execute the duty.
As school board trustee of Rio Grande City CISD, I will protect...
And I will, to the best of my ability, preserve...
And I will, to the best of my ability, preserve...
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
Emily, come on. John, can Chris join? Can you join him?
Yes.
By the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, both of us, I take your name to solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duty of school board trustee of Rio Grande City CISD, Park County, Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and this state, so help me God.
You have to sign.
Yeah, hold on. Anywhere your pants on.
I've got no pants on.
Okay. There you go.
Please.
There you go. I've got another one you need to sign, but I'll get that one in a second.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a little break, in case you guys need to take some more pictures and to take some time with your family.
Mr. President, if I may, I think we need to also congratulate yourself and Dr. B. on your reelections for place four and place five.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramirez.
Before we break, to all three of the here that won, maybe you wanna say a little bit of things to the audience, all three of you would be nice. If you have something to say, it'd be a good time.
I just, I am honored, truly honored. Thank you for giving me, once again, the opportunity to serve you guys, and I will continue to serve you with the best of my ability. And again, thank you very much. Really appreciate your support.
Thank you all so much. It was a long election. I can tell you that, breathing heavy, I finally got this mask off. I've got, I think, some of my strongest supporters in my family sitting in the audience, and then I have one of my toughest critics sitting there in the back, is Ms. Varentos, who was actually my librarian a very long time ago. And I actually told her when we first came up, I said, "Ms. Varentos, I'm looking around, I'm remembering having lunch in this cafeteria and being in your library in these buildings." And my favorite story was Peter Pan, and she remembers that. And now, as an adult, you know, Peter Pan wasn't as popular as it is now, but I finally, I now know what it means when the crocodile is chasing the... Right? I'm gonna keep talking. When the crocodile's chasing Captain Hook, he's got the clock in his belly, and what it is, is that's life, right? It's chasing Captain Hook, and it's already got a piece of him. And so Peter Pan, I guess he realized that, 'cause he lives in a world where you can be anything you wanna be, but at one point, he comes to the realization you have to grow up and make decisions. And that's where I'm at now. I'm at the point where I realize I have to make decisions, and this is what I prepared for. And so I know what the story means, and thank you for everything you've done for me, and also for my family, and you choked a little bit, but thank you all very much.
First and foremost, I wanna thank my mother, my girlfriend, Angelina. I also wanna thank my, the people I consider family, Monica, Mrs. Peña, Alvaro in the back. I wanna thank you all for supporting me, for helping me through this election. Three weeks of very difficult and long election, but I appreciate everybody's support. I promise that I'm gonna uphold this oath, and I'm gonna do the best of my ability to make sure that my decisions are for the best of the community. Thank you.
I'd like to also congratulate all the incoming and board members and reelected board members. I look forward to working with all of you. We know that we all have the same vision, and that's for the student's success, and so again, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much.
We have some dessert and some entrees for everyone.
Okay, section three, general meeting called to order. Section four, the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Peña, would you help us out with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peña. Section five, conduct election of board of education officers.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion to put Eddie Ramirez as president, Jay Peña as vice president, and Basilio Villarreal as secretary.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. All in favor, raise your right hand.
We need a second.
Second? Who seconded? Mr. Castillo? Motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. At this time, I would like to congratulate Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Peña, and Mr. Villarreal. Go ahead and take over from here, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez.
Mr. Ramirez.
I don't...
There you go.
Section eight, okay. All right. Let me just say, I'm deeply humbled, and I didn't take a note, but I abide and I follow the same one every day at work in my profession and in my daily life as well. So just know that I will vow and I'll continue to fight the way I always have. I once had this position, this capacity for a couple of months, and I'm deeply humbled and honored to be able to serve again in this capacity. So thank you for the vote of confidence to the entire board, and look forward to working with everyone.
Mr. Velazquez, before we go any further, thank you for serving as president for the last year. Thank you for all your service you've done to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villarreal. Thank you very much.
Right, section, was it six? Appointment of board of education standing committee. And this, and if I may, I know pursuant to local policy, it's up to the board president to determine whether he wants to either place or appoint committee members, and it's my, at least mentality and philosophy, that sometimes when you have committees, what happens is a lot is discussed in those committees, and when it gets to the board meetings, a lot of that isn't put out there for the public and the community to hear. So I'm of the opinion and philosophy that we should have everything out in the open, full transparency, that everything that needs to be discussed, be discussed here, so everybody gets to hear it, opine on it, vote on it, et cetera. So it's my, I'm gonna make the motion to have no action on this particular section. I second. There's a motion by myself, Mr. Ramirez, and second by Mr. Villarreal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, signify by raising your left. Five to one, motion passes. Section seven, approval minutes with regards to the regular board meeting held on October 20th, 2020. Do I have a motion on section seven?
Motion for minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Castillo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section eight, public forum. I have been given a sheet that indicates Elisa Sarate does want to speak to the board on the subject of requesting to reopen the retirement incentive. Is she online?
Yes.
Ms. Sarate, if you're, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, ma'am, I'm gonna go ahead and give you five minutes. You don't have to use them all, but I'm trying to limit the amount of time.
That's fine. Thank you.
Go ahead when you're ready, ma'am.
Okay, good evening. My name is Elisa Sarate. I'm requesting to reopen the retirement incentive. I've been blessed with 30 years of service working for the Rio Grande City School District. I retired on August 5th before the 2021 school year began, and I was told that I was not able to receive the retirement incentive because of the deadline had been closed. I honestly did not receive any letter of notification. I wasn't aware of this offer at all. I was told there was a series of letters that were mailed out, but I didn't receive anything. If I would've known there was a retirement incentive being offered, I would've have taken the deal, and I wouldn't be in this situation right now. I am beyond disappointed by this. This is my second attempt to get a response from both the superintendent and the board, the school board. I'm aware that there are more concerning issues right now, but I am asking you to please consider this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sarate, for your comments, and they will be addressed, Ms. Sarate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, section nine, announcement of board members' training required by task policy BBD, board members' training and orientation. I'm gonna go ahead and just read down the list that's in our board packet under 2020 board members' training hours. Elisa Velazquez Jr., board president, exceeded required training. Leticia O. Lopez, board vice president, required, exceeded required training. Dr. B., board secretary, exceeded required training. Noé Castillo, board member, exceeded required training. Daniel J. García, board member, exceeded required training. Eduardo Eric Ramirez, board member, exceeded required training. And Basilio Divarreal Jr., board member, also exceeded required training. It's announced at the regular board meeting of November 17th, 2020. Section 10, recommending approval of the consent agenda. That would be, consent is, that would be item one, consider and take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City CISD. Item two, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of October 2020. And item three, consider and take possible action on requisitions of $5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
Mr. President, I would like to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of, and I'm gonna go with the exceptions of, 326594, 326628, 326313.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion?
Yes. Can I just ask a few, I'm sorry, and can I add to that, I'm sorry, 3265, 326588 also to the exceptions. And the reason I'm putting these exceptions is that they're going out to bids on copiers, but we're buying copiers, so I don't, there's, in one of these things, it's saying that we're going out to bid for copiers, correct? But yet, we're buying copiers here, correct? So don't you think we should wait till we get the whole package deal for the copiers? We have a, we're going out to bid for bids for copiers.
Dianita, can you please explain? Good evening. Yes, we went out for proposals or quotes for copiers that are, that have already expired, and some that are already coming up for expiring, and these requisitions are only to cover the two months from here until the end of December, so that we can continue making copies on the current ones. We cannot just stop the current copiers, because if not, we will be without copiers for two months until January, if we decide to go with the new copiers.
Ma'am, but I look at, like, for example, 326588, we've got eight copiers for the tune of $54,000 for two months?
Yes, sir. It is expensive.
Something, $54,000 for eight?
Yes.
I don't, I just, I don't know. Doesn't make sense. So you're basically telling me that every copier, correct, if I'm wrong, is seven, eight, 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 sixty-four, a little 7,500 for two months? Per copier? Eight copiers at $54,000. Seven times eight is fifty-six, so they come in at around $7,000. So basically, they're charging us $7,000 per copier for two months.
I would have to look at the numbers, but I am more than sure that it is not 7,000 per copier.
Well, it says a copier. In other words, if you look at the numbers, 326588, it says a copier lease for the month, for two months. It says $54,496, and if you divide eight by 54,000, it comes out about around $7,000 for two months. That don't make sense.
Yes, sir.
Can we, I made my motion to exclude those. Do you bring more information? I also have a question, Ms. Robles, on the 326313. That is the, some maintenance, 32...
It's on page 36, in the middle, the fourth one down.
63...
326313.
Okay, yes.
Okay. I've been told that that work has already been completed. Well, we have a policy here that anything above $5,000 comes to the board before it gets done. So how did, how did, how did that happen?
Yes, sir. And we, the business office and administration, only finds out that these things happen when the invoices surface on our desks. We are trying to reprimand directors and administrators who go out and place orders without a purchase order, but unfortunately, we have some there that are still not doing or following the proper procedures.
The reason I say, ma'am, is that that procedure, that particular thing, has been in existence for, what, eight, 10 years, about 5,000 and over?
Yes, sir.
And I just, I just, we can't have long rangers just doing whatever they want. We have to have accountability. They have to, in other words, they have to bring that thing, this is a project, we're asking permission from the board, because that's what, and that's what I have problems with, you know? We have a procedure here, and we need to follow it. If it's $5,000 and over, it has to be brought to us. We just can't have people spending money, like, this particular thing, what was it for? What did it do? What's the scope of the project, and things of that nature? So basically, we've already done it, and now you're asking to, after the fact, to prove it.
And the purchasing administrator has been doing a good job in sending out memos for reprimanding those persons, and I know that the person in charge of that project has already been informed, and they have already, it's already been discussed that this should not be going on.
Well, I've been told there's another project that's already been done, and it's coming to us in the next meeting, that it was the same thing again.
And again, we don't find out until we get the quote, and then we ask, "When is this happening?", and they told us that it's already been completed.
And Mr. Villarreal, just to add, we do have trainings for all directors and secretaries and anyone who's in charge that we entrust, that they go through the process and they get trained, and we send memos out to let every director know that, you know, they have to follow the process. So when Mesita Jimenez came on board, I asked her to CC me when anyone is presenting an invoice without the requisition before, and like you've mentioned, we are constantly letting our directors know that this is a process that we must follow. Unfortunately, like yourself, we just found out that the invoice was sent to us for payment, and so Dr. Salinas did get in touch with the supervisor, and also, there was a conversation between the athletic director and the supervisor for maintenance about this project, and unfortunately, you know, that situation happened, and like I mentioned, Dianita mentioned, we do meet with directors, and we did take action on this particular incident.
The only problem, like I say again, I don't wanna be redundant, but it's gonna happen again. In our next meeting, you're gonna bring another one exactly the same. So the question is, when is it gonna end? That's the question, I mean, in other words...
We need to find a way to validate all that information, and like I said, you know, it doesn't happen until the requisitions are being rendered and placed in the system, but again... But again, you know, we're going to take action.
Well, I made a motion to exclude those till the next meeting, so we can get a better feel. That's my motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Vareal, the second, by Mr. Castillo, to prove item 1, 2, and 3 with those four exceptions.
There are five.
Five?
Sorry, that's four. Let me see, 1, 2, 3.
Was 326628 brought up this morning?
Yes, 32668, yeah. And, yeah. And on that one, ma'am, I would appreciate if they would go out for more quotes. Apparently, Mr. Pope, he's a, he knows a lot about people, equipment, and he basically got quotes, and, and they say that we could find something somewhat more reasonable than that. So maybe they can go out for more quotes.
I'll go visit with Mr. Pope, so that we can get more information on what those...
Well, that's my motion. I got a first and a second.
Mr. President, I have a question, if I could.
Sure. Mr. Pope, you're recognized. Go ahead.
Benya.
Benya.
There you go. Is this the same department that's having these issues?
With these other requisitions?
Yeah, with those records. So it's, it's different department?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's the only question I got.
Right. Motion by Mr. Vareal, the second, by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, also signified by raising your left. Velasquez? If I have a, if I have one? Motion passes. Action item number four, Consider and Take Possible Action on Budget Amendment Number 2021-2.
Mr. President?
Do I have a motion on item number four?
I, I, I would like to approve this motion, but, well, I'm going to approve the motion with a caveat of basically just, um...
You want some discussion time?
Yeah, I, I, I would...
Do you want to be recognized for discussion?
Yeah, can I just discuss this a little bit before we, I...
Page 37?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to know, Ms. Robles, everything seems good, but there's a, your budget amendment of $144,000 with $93?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know, we all know in the last meeting or two that your, your, okay, people in your department got a $2,000 raise and a $1,000 raise for Paris. Is this budget amendment, does that include this in this budget amendment or not?
No, sir. That raise was approved back in May or June of last year. And this item that you're looking at, this is to make an adjustment to the property taxes that we're projecting to collect. After, remember that back in June, we adopted the budget, but without having the final certification of the appraisal district. And so once we got those final certified values, we had to adjust our tax rate by a few cents or less than cents. And so we had to adjust the revenue by that amount.
So this budget amendment does not include those raises, correct?
No, sir. That was approved by the superintendent last year.
Okay, with that said, then I move that we approve this item?
Yeah, motion by Mr. Vareal. Do I have a second?
I actually have some questions.
Mr. Penya, you're right.
A second, then we can ask for more questions.
Understood.
Second by Mr. Velasquez.
Now you can ask.
Now, you recognize Mr. Penya for discussion?
Thank you. Ms. Robles, on the, I was going through the budget amendments, and I was noticing, I think your 6,000 accounts are going to be your revenue accounts, right?
The 5,000s.
The 5,000s are your revenue accounts?
Yes.
And your 6,000 accounts, what are those going to be?
The expenditures.
Those are the expenditure accounts. And so I got your chart of accounts. The only thing that I was asking for, if I could, for, I guess it would be, I don't know if I should go through each account themselves, or I think I'd actually sent you a message on it, if I could get a check register for those accounts? Because that's the only thing that I was, that I was missing. It was, I guess it would be 5711, 5812, 5929. And then it would be 5829, 6399. So those are the first five at the top. And then 6499 and 6291. And then if I could also got, get 6499 and 6299. Would it be possible to get a check register for that? Now, I noticed that, I'd asked at least for like the last, I think it was the last two quarters. We started April 1st.
Okay.
But you mentioned you had a fiscal year shift in June, right?
Yes, July 1st. So that's what I had sent you, an expenditure detail for those accounts that you requested, and then a revenue detail report for those accounts.
Okay. You sent those earlier, brother? You sent those earlier today?
Yes.
All right. I haven't had a chance to take a look at them, so I'm actually going to motion to table if I could, but in the meanwhile...
Well, then let's vote, then let's vote. Not, we vote the vote. Motion down there.
Okay.
We already made a motion.
Yeah.
When I ran out the current motion is to approve item 4, by Mr. Vareal, the second, by Mr. Velasquez. All in favor of that particular motion, raise your right hand. So signified by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, 1 to 5 votes of that motion does not pass. Mr. Penya, are you making a motion to table this?
I'm, I'm making a motion to table at this time, if I could.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, so signified by raising your left, 5 to 1, that item is tabled. Item number 5, Consider and Take Possible Action on Adoption of 2020 Tax Rule Resolution. Do I have a motion on item number 5?
I saw move, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, the second, by Mr. Velasquez. All those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item number 6, Consider and Take Possible Action on Computer System License and Maintenance Agreement by and Between Appraisal and Collections LLC and Rio Grande City CISD. Do I have a motion on item number 6?
I saw move that we approve item number 6 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Penya. All in favor, so signified by raising your right hand?
Oh, discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion, Mr. Vareal?
Is this for the tax office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I needed to ask.
All, all in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item number 7, Consider and Take Possible Action on Resolution and Annual Review of Investment Policy and Investment Strategies.
I move that we approve item 7 as presented in our board packet.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion on item number 7? All those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item number 8, Consider and Take Possible Action on Resolution on Sources of Instruction Related to Investment Responsibilities. Do I have a motion on item 8?
I saw move.
A motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo.
Discussion.
Any discussion on item 8?
What is this?
Which, item number 8? It's just approving the sources that we can go to, to continue on the hours required by the state, so that we can continue, like, if we are going to invest whatever fund balance we have in the different instruments.
Okay. Can you explain that again?
This is just to approve the sources of instruction, let's say UTSA or UTRDB, other continuing education providers that will give us, to continue with our hours, so that we can be...
It's, it's educational hours that you all need?
Yes, for investing.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve item made as presented, and second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signified by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item number 9, Consider and Take Possible Action on Request for Permission to Use Texas Department Information Resources for District-Wide Copiers. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item number 9?
Yeah, I move that we table this item till we get more, more, I would like to see we can get more quotes on this, because there's too much of a discrepancy between the different quotes. So my motion is to table this item.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Vareal to table. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor to table this item, raise your right hand? So signified by raising your right hand? Discussion? Mr. Pope? Go ahead.
I was going through the actual, um, good evening. I was going through the actual contract. I know you all were recommending Rico, but if my numbers are correct, Rico was approximately for 36 months, $1,024,000. Xerox, I couldn't determine. I know it was fair market value. It didn't really tell us anything about anything, so I, I don't even know how we would consider that. But then, Cosera, or however you mention it, that one was at 36 months. I kind of estimated approximately $400,000. What is the difference between the $1,000,000 and $400,000? And then we go into a 48 months on the Cosera, and that comes out to approximately $433,000. Why is there a recommendation for Rico if Cosera obviously? And I went through the actual conditions, and it says, you know, they'll lend you machines if it breaks down within a certain time period. There's always availability. There's, you know, there's, I, I looked at the contract, and it kind of seemed more favorable to Cosera, but I wanted to make, I wanted to see what was the difference.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board, Mr. Board President. Just wanted to go ahead and answer your question on this discussion. The reason that we went with Rico in the first place was, we were going to go and put this in as a requisition at first. So we were going with three vendors, and with the three vendors, we selected Rico. Reason being was that we were trying to go through one cooperative, the DIR system. On Cosera, what happened with Cosera is, one, we would be their first school district. They've only serviced city, like McAllen, just city offices. Another reason was, their copies are not unlimited. So what you're seeing there is the equipment pricing on the 36 months only. No services are included, and we would be charged each copy. Right now, we're estimating that the district makes about 1,900 copies. And that's a total of amount that you need to also include in the total amount of the 36, okay? So it does fairly come out to a little bit of close to like $700,000, at least rounding it off, okay? With the Xerox, that was our first choice, honestly. But what happened with Xerox was, at the end, they ended up telling us that they could not just only offer us DIR pricing on the equipment, they had to give us another cooperative. And that other cooperative, TCBN, well, these two vendors were not a part of. So what happened there was, yes, they were a smaller amount. They only gave us the 1,800 copies to work with, and we could round about. But if we went over the amount, we also were going to be charged for it, okay? So there's additional fees that you're not going to see basically on here. And that's the, that's the biggest difference. On Rico, Rico was showing us that while we do have right now 41 Ricos, they gave us two options. The two options being that we could go option 1, and really go ahead and get new copiers, 41 new copiers. And that's why the option 1 came out. And yes, while it was most expensive, they satisfied still being DIR. They satisfied being in a school district. There was different criteria that we were kind of looking at, the unlimited features coming in. And so basically, with this fleet, it was a total of 96 copiers that we are basically going out right now. The district currently has 140 copiers, okay? There were three different vendors. The three different vendors right now are Rico. The second vendor is with CIT, and that's Copy Graphics, which comes in with, I'm sorry, with CIT, and that is with Conica Multen's. We have Total Imaging, okay? Those we have currently about 33 more coming in for expiration with them. And then we also have Cannons, and they come out with Copy Graphics. We have 22 that have already expired. So when we first started this project, it started off with 41 expired. Then we had 20 more, 28 more expired, then 22 expired. Plus, we do have more individuals from different departments that are requesting. Right now, we have currently six new copiers that people would like to purchase and lease. So in all essence, that's pretty much what we ended up coming in. And with the Ricos, well, they did offer us rebates and competitively to go, but what happened with the Xerox was that they were using two different cooperatives that didn't allow us to kind of go with Cosera or...
Is, is there any way of getting more quotes on these things? Like, I know Copy Graphics is saying they weren't even given an opportunity. I think for us, it's for us to get the best deal for the school. Sometimes you say, well, the city of McAllen is a pretty big city, right?
Yes.
I understand that, that, that they've only serviced, like Mr. Pope is saying, only, only cities, but I would imagine McAllen has a ton of copiers too. So just because they haven't done schools, but they've done huge cities, like, not that McAllen's huge, but you would think McAllen has quite a number of copiers too. So I just think we should put this out and give everybody an opportunity and get the best deal possible for our school.
Yes, we can. We can go ahead and go out. Basically, what I did was just turn it around in quotes form and to satisfy the three vendors to get that out. So what we can do officially is if we like, go ahead and go ahead...
My thing is, if you put an RFP, I think an RFP, like, you give every company an opportunity, like, right now, we're having companies telling us that they weren't given a chance. And if you put an RFP, everybody gets an opportunity to bid on this, and the school district may benefit when there's more competition.
Yes, I agree on that. And if we could go ahead and try to bring that 96 total, and plus, we do have 33 more that are coming out from Conica Multen, at least, because the next renewals won't be until May. So we could kind of start looking at that and then have something, I guess, ready for you by...
I just think that if you put RFPs out, everybody's going to be bidding, trying to lowball the thing, and we may get a good deal.
Yes, I agree.
Any further discussion on item number 9?
Yes, Mr. President, may I be recognized?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Penya.
I, I, I think, I'm looking at these, the terms, and we're somewhat familiar with these, 36-month, these are long-term contracts, but the thing is, I'm noticing the 1.9 million copies. I guess, were these, was this, is this an assessment that's based on the printing numbers, say, from last year?
Currently, right now, what we've been using between January and now. And I understand that, you know, COVID's been happening.
Right.
But we tried to make sure that we did get that from the vendors, and the vendors assessed it based on that.
Because I think that, I think that, I'm hoping that we come out of this COVID situation better, obviously, than we went in. And I can tell you, in healthcare, in law, pretty much in every field that, that's out there, there's a push to go paperless.
Yes.
I understand there are students that suffer from dyslexia and other conditions require, you know, paper printing, but I think this is an opportunity for us to kind of take a look at our policies and say, look, is there an opportunity here to be able to save on these types of costs? And let's not forget the cost of paper. I made the mistake one time of, of offering to donate paper to an elementary school, then I realized how many reams they go through.
Oh, yes.
It's expensive. And so I think this is an opportunity, and maybe we can, this is a challenge to the board and to school administration, to possibly see if we can push students to be, and teachers to be a little more paperless and possibly save on these as well, in which case, it would be difficult to make a decision right now, I think, given the, right, the crisis.
You have to work it out for you, Mrs. Jimenez.
Yes, it was a very big project to begin with, so, yes.
Thank you. Maybe the best thing, again, look at the RFPs and see what's up.
Yes, we will go ahead and do that. Thank you.
So the current motion is to table item number 9, it's by Mr. Vareal, the second, by Mr. Castillo. All in favor to table item 9, so signified, raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Jimenez. Item number 10, Consider and Take Possible Action on Awarding the Following Bits. It's on number 21-08 Concrete, number 2109, Janitorial Supplies, number 21-10 Construction Materials.
Mr. President, I move that we approve 2108 as presented, 2109 as presented, and 2110 as presented, with a caveat that in cases of emergencies that are, that we can buy locally, basically. I just, if, if, at the end of the day, we put something out to bid, and we're missing a half-inch tee, and we, the places, we just need to, with a caveat that we can buy locally in cases of emergency or great need, okay?
Yes, so most of our locals are either buyboard vendors, as well as we've just been keeping track of the amount that they have been spending. As long as they don't spend over the $50,000, we are okay.
Well, the only thing I can say, for example, construction materials, we need a, a three-quarter Well, the only thing I can say, for example, construction materials, we need a three-quarter T. And, well, the only guy who got it in McAllen to bid, well, by the time we go over there, hey, we can get it here for $2, why not buy it here, right? That's all. So my motion is to approve these with a caveat that in cases of great need or emergency, we can buy locally.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, is there a second? Second by Mr. Pope. Any further discussion on item 10? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on ratifying TA approval of the waiver to extend transition for on-campus instruction, October, from October 13, 2020 through November 10, 2020.
Board President, Ms. Garza, is it on, members of the board? Basically, item number 11 has to be ratified by the board. The board does not have to approve the actual waiver. And what this waiver was, was TA gave us four weeks of automatic transition to open our schools, which was from August 17, which was our first day of school, to September 11. That was the first four-week period. Then, if we still needed additional transition time, we could use an additional four weeks without having to submit any paperwork. There was a form that had to be filled out by Dr. Salinas and Ms. Garza that came to the board for approval of that four-week period. And that was from September 14 to October 9. And it was a one-page form that the board had to approve. So that gave us eight weeks. After the eight-week period, in order for us to continue to fund our schools, which is, you know, the reason that we operate, we had to submit a waiver. And to submit that waiver, of course, we had to petition to TA and ask them, we want to submit a waiver. And then they gave us a series of questions, and we had to submit a series of narratives in return. So that waiver period was a four-week, it was two to four weeks. Some people got two weeks, some people got four weeks. Fortunately, we were one of the few school districts that got the four additional weeks. So that gave us from October 13 to November 10. And what the waiver was, and I want to explain, because I know that there's been some confusion as to what the waiver is. The waiver was not for individuals, either personnel or students, to remain to stay at home. What the waiver was, was to continue to limit the number of students that came to campus because of the pandemic and because of the COVID, and trying to keep the spread of the virus from coming into the school. So when we asked for that waiver, it was just to continue to limit who would come on campus. So that waiver ended November 10. Last week, we did contact TA to see what the options were for the district. And they did say that, of course, we could open up our schools come November 16, as we had planned. Or if we could give them confirmation that we would open our schools to any student who wished to return to school on December 14, then we could do so. With the understanding that we would continue to transition. So we still did not open our schools to all our students who wanted to come. And just to let you know, we checked our surveys. I haven't checked them this week, but as of last week, we had over 1,000 students requesting to come back to campus. So that's kind of proved a challenge for us, because our teachers remained to stay at home. So with that said, TA did give us an additional transition period, and they did not give us a waiver, because they're not giving waivers anymore. They're just saying, okay, what is it that you need to do? And basically, they're working with schools like ourselves in the Valley. And I know right now, they're also working with the schools in El Paso, because they're experiencing the same thing we experienced a few months back, they're experiencing there. So they're shutting down schools, and they're having the same issues. So they're dealing with those individual districts as they need to. So they said that there were some schools in the Valley, Real Grande City CISD being one of them, that would be continuing to transition. The only issue with that, or the only concern, was that the state has something that is called Hold Harmless. And when we open our schools to anybody who wishes to attend, then we can continue to be hold harmless. So we have the first and second six weeks that will be hold harmless. And what that means is that for those first two six weeks of the school year, the district is guaranteed the same funding from the past. However, when we come into the third six weeks, which coincidentally was November 11, because we had, like I said, we had a day, what was it? It was a holiday, I think it was Veterans Day, or what did we have? Oh, no, Teacher Work Day on November 10. So we had to open our schools on November 11, because that was the beginning of the third six weeks. So if you opened up your schools to everyone who wanted, not to everyone, and it wasn't mandatory, everybody that wishes to remain at home can still remain at home. So I want to be clear about that. But if we open our schools to those 1,000 children that surveyed that they wanted to return, then we would have another additional six weeks of hold harmless. So what they have told us is they have told us that there are no guarantees, but they will look into it. But they would not give us anything in writing definitively to tell us that we were going to be able to take advantage of that hold harmless. So possibly, you know, we could lose funding, or if they decide to come back and give us a chance, that could happen. But they would not give us anything in writing. I think Ms. Garza did request it, but they said that they were, like I said, we're one of the few school districts that are asking for additional time. Most school districts have opened their schools to those children who wish to come back.
And what's the potential penalty, the hold harmless?
I think that they did the numbers, I don't know, Ms. Garza, what did those numbers look like?
Bienita did the numbers, and it looks like $2 million.
That's the number I heard, so it's scary number.
Yeah.
$2 million.
But the decision, again, in consultation with the health authority, they were very concerned that we're going to open up the schools, because the cases have been, positive cases are in arise. And so, you know, they strongly suggested that I continue with the waiver. And like Ms. Morris mentioned, Mr. Delgado did not say no to the hold harmless. He said that they have not made a decision on different districts that are in the same situation, and so they're taking that into account.
We have no idea as to when to expect the response on the hold harmless?
No, because the submission for the hold harmless is on May 1. So if we can certify by May 1 that we opened our schools the third six weeks, then, right, we're good.
So let me ask you a question, Mrs. Morris. If we had started school earlier, I mean, later, as we, some of us wanted to, we wouldn't be in the predicament we would be in right now, would we?
Yes and no. We would probably still be in transition.
Right. So we would be within the second, the second...
We would be in transition, but we would still have to open up our schools the beginning of the third six weeks. But we would not be in the third six weeks, you're correct.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. If we had opened up later...
We would be in the third six weeks, probably right after Thanksgiving.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And Mr. Villarreal, just for information, we did have all those discussions. And in the administration decision was that if we did stall the delay, the start of the year, that we would go into the summer time to make up all the 178 days that we need for instructional. So we would, you know, go into our tutorial, I mean, summer school program, and perhaps go into the beginning of the following school year. So we would not have time, you know, to address, you know, the summer intervention group.
The only thing that I say sometimes, you know, later, you know, we have vaccines that could be around the corner. They say vaccines we're going to have after Christmas in January. And if vaccines do come, I mean, that's going to be our salvation. But all I'm trying to say is that, you know, if TA says, hey, we're going to give you a break, hey, fantastic. But if TA says, hey, by the way, we're not going to give you a break, then we're going to lose funding. And then how are we going to start, you know, for paying, you know, employees and things of that nature? It gets a little more interesting.
What we have going, sir, is that with the asynchronous plan, we have the opportunity to engage students, even if they don't log on virtually, and still count them present. So our percentage is really high right now for the third six weeks.
Can I ask what the percentage is?
97%. So we're in good standing at the moment. So we will continue to ensure that our students engage. And if they don't engage in our virtual instruction classrooms, they can engage on the LMS, which is our learning management system. And teachers are making contact with the students and giving an opportunity for them to turn in an assignment within the 24-hour period. So our attendance has been, has maintained in 97%.
This is a question that's similar, but I know when they were trying to transition back, there was a lot of teachers that went on ADA. Do you have a number on how many teachers went on ADA?
Dr. Salinas has that information.
It was a big number, right?
All employees in the district, about 202, 203, 202, 203.
So that would be about 10%, give or take?
Yes, sir.
And they're still coming in?
We did have a deadline of November 12, but the application process has also a very diligent back and forth with the supervisor, so those are being processed. It'll be about 202, 203.
Did you have any further discussion on item 11? Do you have a motion, item 11?
I saw a move.
A motion by Mr. Villarreal, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Penney. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number 12, consider and take possible action on target support and comprehensive support plans, which is Ringo Middle School, Veterans Middle School, Gruya Middle School, Gruya Elementary, and RGC High School.
Ms. Ayala is helping me pass out the, it's a packet. And basically, what I did is I just kind of gave you an excerpt of... Just so that you know, when we submitted our asynchronous plan, my department was in charge of coming up with a plan, of course, submitting what would be in the best interest of the district. And in the best interest of the district was to submit an asynchronous plan. However, TA did say that this would be a full accountability year. And what that means is there is no break for testing at this point. Of course, that could change, and you might call me a liar in a week or two, because that seems to be the trend with TA. But right now, we are testing in December. We have students right now that are preparing to take EOC. So I don't think they're going to go back on the testing. So I know I'm in charge of accountability, and one of the things that they've told us is, you're a go. If you have target support schools, we expect those schools to show gains. I have been in contact with the principals at these schools, and they are concerned, one of them being Mr. Ricky Science. Just so that you know, when we look at the target support schools, we have all three middle schools, which we all know, to me, is a very critical grade level from 6 to 8. And all three middle schools currently are in target support. And that is important to note, and I want to make you aware that when you have middle schools who are feeder schools to these high schools, eventually, what happens? It all bottlenecks at the high school. And I worked at the high school for 17 years, and we used to have something called AYP, which is the exact same thing that we're talking about here. And we had high schools that were in, we had one high school, and our high school was in AYP. So all our elementaries and middle schools would perform well, and they would say, well, high school, how come you guys can't get it together? You all are the ones that are bringing the district down. And the reason that that would happen was because everything would bottleneck at Real Grande City High School. We were 2,800 students at the time, so it would all bottleneck there. So my concern is, and I've been speaking to the middle school principals, is that, you know, like, for example, Ringo Middle School, if Ringo Middle School does not improve their scores, then Ringo Middle School could end up being a comprehensive campus. And what does that mean? They could be a D or an F campus. They're that close because of their scores. Remember, we didn't test last year. We tested almost two years ago. So not only have students not been in school for almost a year, now we have to meet accountability, not only meet the passing standard, but show progress and show gains. So if we're not showing progress and gains, it doesn't matter that the students pass. It's important that they pass, but they also have to pass and improve. And that's the difficult part, and that's why these schools that are target support, and of course, comprehensive, they're in target support and comprehensive, because they can have really good, high passing scores, and you can say, but they had in the 80s and the 70s, and why did they have, and this particular school had in the 50s, and they're not here? Because it's based on growth. So if there is no growth, then you're going to end up in target support. So it's very difficult for me to tell you that, you know, we're all working remotely, and that our students are going to be expected to grow. That is what TA is telling us right now. So, you know, all our administrators are, you know, it's a difficult time for them, because to motivate the students, I know that Mr. Ricky Science has been himself calling students, calling parents. He goes, I'm not even letting the teachers do it. I'm calling the students and I'm recruiting. So when we look at the numbers, and every day they go up, we look at the students that are, that are in school, you know, he's saying, I have these kids, and they're at risk, so I'm bringing them in. So he's probably got the most kids enrolled right now on campus enrollment, because he's telling them, you're not engaging, you're not logging on, you're not submitting work, you need to come onboard. Or you need to start engaging, and you need to start submitting. So I just want to let you all know that we have those four campuses that are target support. And then we still have Gruya Elementary, because we didn't test last year, they continue to be a comprehensive campus. And what that means is that, not last year, but the year before, they got a rating of F, and they had D in several domains, so they became a comprehensive school. And we were on our way. And the reason I say we, because I was there almost every day last year, and I kept saying, we're going to make it, we're going to make it, and then we didn't get to test. And I remember the first person that called me when the test got canceled was the assistant principal at that school. And then, of course, the teachers and the principal and everybody, she goes, did you just hear the news, what they said? I said, yes, what's going to happen? Well, we don't get to test, that means, she goes, are we going to stay in F? And I thought, no, the state's going to come up with something, we're going to test later, it's going to be all right. But that didn't happen. So they carried over their label again. And that same thing happened to our middle school. So the label carried over, we didn't test, but like I said, the way that we're going right now, and the trend, is that we're going to have to test. So basically, what I gave you is I gave you a NEP shirt from the different plans. And what they've done is they've submitted their, I guess, their action plans for the year, what they're going to improve on. But one of the things they said is also, it's very difficult for us to say, we're going to put very small gains, because we don't want to say we're going to grow from 60% to 90. It's not going to happen. So they said, we're going small increments, because to me, they have to submit, okay, if you were at 40, what's going to be the growth? Well, I'm going to be at 45, or I'm going to be at 50. But they go, we're not going to project very high numbers, because we're trying to be realistic. So all of the schools that are in this situation have to submit a plan. Only one, one school goes to TA. The one for comprehensive, which is Gruya's plan, I submit their whole plan to TA at the beginning of February. The rest just need to look at their plan, we need to meet, we need to discuss. But right now, the greatest difficulty is getting our students to engage, and of course, to pass their classes, you know? Because the attendance is there, but I don't know academically if we're moving along the way we should. Does anybody have any questions? I know there's some new members to the board, and you might have questions for me.
Motion or any discussion on item 12?
I'd like to be recognized, just a few questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Penney.
Mrs. Morris, you said nobody's been tested since last year?
I mean by STAR. That's the only way we can get out of comprehensive or target support.
Has there been any interim examinations or any type of assessment since?
We've had benchmarks, and then we've had six weeks common assessments.
Okay. And those benchmarks have been distributed to the principals, the data's been distributed?
Miss Curriculum, they're in the process of benchmarking.
So it's going to be the first benchmark?
It's going to be the first benchmark. That is correct.
Since the tests that were administered last year? Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, just to say, the state only allows you how many benchmarks per year?
Two.
Exactly.
There can only be two tests that mimic the STAR.
It said before, you could benchmark, 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 benchmark. And now the state only allows a belief, that's what I think too.
Like, two, two that are like, that mimic, meaning that they're equal in length and a number of items.
Do we need action on this item? Okay, I move, I assume move that we approve item 12 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, do you have a second? Second by Mr. Pope. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris. Item 13, consider and take possible action on resolution for premium pay for onsite instructional staff for the duration, term of November 16, 2020 through December 18, 2020.
Mr. Salinas, I've read this. Is there any way we could modify this? And I'll say what I'm going to say in a little bit. I believe that we should, I believe that teachers who go into, into schools is a hazard. We're in COVID situation. But so are a bunch of administrators, so are a bunch of janitors, so are a bunch of other people. And my question is, or my thing is, the idea of basically giving every professional, I don't, I mean, not only teachers, but every professional that goes back to work $1,000. And every paraprofessional that goes to work, give them $500. And they gave, that they get paid before, my motion is that every professional gets $1,000 that comes to work. Okay? Not that is on the computer, but comes to work. And every paraprofessional that comes to work or auxiliary, $500 if they come to work and present themselves in the school. And what I'm trying to say is, for example, let's say you have 50 kids or 100 kids, and 15 teachers show up. Well, that's, we need to get the teachers back into the, into schools. Now, I know it's hazard, I know it's dangerous, but I would, I would call it a hazard of COVID pay. And I think that, the thing is, teachers are, don't get me wrong, they work real hard, but so do the janitors, so do the bus drivers, so do the administrators. And I think that every, we need to be fair with everybody. So I think I want to make a motion to say that, that every professional gets $1,000, every paraprofessional gets $500 at once, that show up to work every day, as a hazard or COVID pay to be paid before Christmas.
Dr. Salinas, I think I would add just two things. One, we got to put conditions that they actually work, you know, the time they're supposed to. Because sometimes they'll come in a day or two, or, and then they're going to probably expect that, and they'll be upset with us, because they didn't get that money. That's number one. Mr. Penney brought up a good point here, next to me, said that we need to be careful with the general fund. I don't know how much the general fund would be able to sustain, but I guess that depends on the number of teachers that are actually coming in.
Mr. President, members of the board, so on the resolution, in reference to what Mr. Villarreal is mentioning, we did run the numbers with the, the position of the district right now for employees is to work remotely for teachers, most employees. And the increased enrollment as the weeks go on, there's 20 instructional days that are left, including yesterday and today. So we needed this staff. And with the breakdown we had in working with superintendent, was 101 teachers to end the 20 instructional days, and 16 teacher aides. That's the staff that we projected to finish the semester.
But don't you think, Mr. Salinas, that we need to start, in order to begin schools, like they say, we need to start schools, we need to start getting teachers? They just say we have 1,000 and some people, kids wanting to go to school. So those numbers are going to get bigger now. If the teachers can come to school and teach there remotely, but I just believe that anybody who shows up in school should be given a hazard pay, should be given a COVID pay. And our idea is to try and get, and I know it's dangerous, and that's the bottom line, you know? There's a danger, you get paid, and things of that nature. And the people who can't, like, the ones who already opted out, well, they're opted out, basically. The ones that have underlying conditions like diabetes, maybe overweight, maybe high blood pressure, things that you just don't go, simply put.
The 1,223 students that we're talking about will be transitioned within, right after the holidays, the Thanksgiving holidays. And so we... And so we met with every school to look at the number of teachers and teacher aides that we need to transition all 1,283. So that is the total number of staff members that we need. And I understand what you're saying about the custodian, uh, and about the bus driver, but we have all those on a, on a skeleton crew schedule because we're not running all buses and we're not utilizing all the custodial staff either.
And, and maybe we need to start trying to run and, and having them show up every day. All I'm trying to get at is you have, I know you have administrators, you have counselors, you have librarians that work every day and they put themselves out at risk and we're not, we're not in any way or form or fact. And these are only for people who come to work. If you don't come to work on a regular basis, you, like, you're, you're talking to me about the teachers that are gonna show up every day. Well, let's say you get an extra five or six teachers, well, maybe you can get those teachers, start tutoring those kids that are behind and things of that nature.
Ms. Garza, you have the, uh, the staff for, uh, done a week on, week off or so, right? How about the, the, the kitchen, the people that are cooking the meals and stuff? Have they had the same, uh...
She has a rotation schedule going on as well.
They've been at it constantly, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, I, I'm just saying, and, and if we don't get a lot of participation, we're not out a lot of money, correct?
That's correct.
In other words, if at the end, we only have 100 teachers and, and 100 employees, we're not gonna be out a lot of money. Uh, because I think that a lot of people may not come to work anyway.
This whole total about approximately $90,000 just on this, uh, number of staff members that we're looking at.
Well, I know we have a fund balance of 30-some million dollars last time I checked and I think we need to help everybody, not only a few people, because like I say, you've got custodians that are cleaning rooms every day, you have, uh, basically cooks that are cooking every day, you have, uh, counselors, you have, uh, administrators, you have teachers that are showing up every day and I just think we need to help everybody, not only a few.
May I, uh, be recognized, may I?
Go ahead, Mr. Peña.
And just to add to something there, I think that everybody, a lot of the folks who work with the school have had it hard throughout this entire COVID period. A lot of people expended a lot of funds on their own cleaning supplies, cleaning products. But if I could, I, I have a soft spot also for, for peace officers who've been on duty and, uh, I've always had an issue with them being, being kinda considered paraprofessional. I, I believe peace officers in themselves could be professionals. I don't know how many peace officers we have working for the district, but if I could, maybe ask for some consideration to, to, uh, maybe consider them as a stipulation to this policy, maybe consider them professionals for the purpose of this, they're out there every day.
Well, why don't we just add the caveat that, that, that police officers also get the $1,000?
The actual peace officers.
Yeah. All peace officers, in addition to all professionals and peace officers get the $1,000. For the people who show up on a daily basis, no skeleton, no, in other words, who show up on a daily basis. Now, they wanna stay with the skeleton crew, that's fine, but they don't get, they don't get the, uh, because I know there's people here that are working every day, simply put, like Mr. Salinas. He works every day, don't you, Mr. Salinas? Right?
Yes, sir.
Because that's all I'm trying to say. And I think that everybody should, we should be fair with everybody. So that's my motion. I make a motion, professionals a thousand dollars, they come every day, paraprofessionals $500. And, and that's include, uh, police officers at $1,000 and that they get paid before Christmas and that they come on a daily basis.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal that incorporates all the stipulations. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Take it, Dr. Salinas. Item 14, consider and take possible action on T-Mobile hotspots contract.
In talking to Mr. Jay Peña, Mr. Jay Peña recommended that we table this item, so I'm gonna make a motion to table this item.
All right, there's a...
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to table it, second by Mr. Peña.
Discussion. Mr. Peña, can you elaborate on us?
Yeah, if I could, I think that I went through this, I went through the T-Mobile contract. There's just a couple of clauses in there that I'm just not comfortable with. I think one clause, uh, that I'm not comfortable with would be on page 135. It's the last stent, sentence and it's kind of one of those opposite kinda mother, mother Hubbard clauses. It says, notwithstanding anything's agreement, that they basically have the ability to put limits on the total use of the data. And I think this is presented as a month-to-month also. An issue that I have also is on page 134 at the top, there's some language in there that just doesn't look like standard language to me, that to me, it looks like it, they can unilaterally enter into a new agreement if there's a termination on this agreement. And, and considering that it's a month-to-month, it's presented, or seemingly presented as a month-to-month, it doesn't look like a month-to-month to me.
Is anybody here for federal programs?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, Ms. Garza.
Thank you, Mr....
The reason we, um, uh, entertained this contract was initially, we applied for free services and our district qualified for, uh, 1,525, um, hotspots for free. This is called the 10 Million Project by T-Mobile. This had nothing to do with, uh, COVID-19. This was a project that came through before in trying to help rural and low-income communities with, uh, homework accessibility, connectivity for homework. So it only, it only gives us 100 megabytes of, of service. That is not enough. Right now, we're running, um, with Verizon and T-Mobile on an unlimited plan and, uh, at the cost of $40 per unit. Um, and so we have approximately about 2,025 units, like I said. We're dishing out approximately about $81,000 a month. If we continue on this trajectory, you know, you're, you're talking about serious money by the end of, of May and June. Uh, with T-Mobile, we would only pay $15 for this school year and this school year only. Um, like I said, we qualify for the free, we're just trying to upgrade to save the district money. You're talking about $38,125 savings every single month from here to the end of May. So that is a consideration that, that, that was given to us, uh, as part of the Project 10 Million. Um, but like I said, it was, it, the money, the savings, uh, was, uh, enormous and so that is the reason we're bringing it to you. Right now, um, a, a lot of the expense is, is on, um, hotspots and I can tell you, we're waiting and patiently waiting, um, for another federal grant to come out to cover all of this. However, it has not, it was promised to us October 1st, it still has not been released. And so we're trying to look at a savings to the district in case it doesn't come our, our way. And so that is the reason we entertain this and, and because of the pricing.
And I think the issue comes down to one-sided contract lan, language and I'm sure Mr. Peña will offer his services free of charge or, or he'll delegate to Mr. Pope over here.
If I may, if I may just continue just real quick, I just to summarize where my, my position is, obviously, the monthly savings is, is something we're all for, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we wanna also make sure we're comparing apples to apples, right? So we've got the 4G connection and, uh, AT&amp;T, from my understanding, has these awesome 5G towers, I don't know. But if it's about saving money, no problem. The thing about this contract is if it's something that we intend to get out of in May when everybody's back to school and when COVID-19's no longer an issue, and you know, one of these days it's no longer being an issue, I, I, I know it will no longer be an issue, I pray to God it will no longer be an issue. But when it's not, we just wanna make sure we're not tied into an agreement that they can unilaterally change and just kinda commit us to some type of a long-term contract. We wanna be able to get in and out of it with ease. And there's just language in here that's, that looks to me, uh, that's a little more binding than past May. So I think that if we could kick some of this language out, negotiate this contract out the right way, I think we can, we can benefit from those numbers. Bare bones is great, the great, the idea's great, just the contract's language sticks out to me a bit.
Yes, sir.
So in the time being, there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to table, a second by Mr. Peña, uh, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section 9, reports and information, does anybody have any discussion on, uh, any one of those items, 1, 2, 3, or 4?
Section 11.
I'm sorry, 11, I'm sorry, section 11.
Just one, one question, Mr. Salinas. On report on district's, uh, data, report on district staffing data counts for the month of October 20th, 20. I'm gonna ask a simple question, uh, Mr. Salinas. Would it be a fair assessment to say that in the last 90 days, maybe 120 days, maybe the last 60 days, that the district has hired anywhere between 30 to 60 employees?
Yes, sir.
So we hired anywhere between 30 and 60 employees in the last 60 to 90 days? 120 days?
Yes, sir.
Why would that be, Mr. Salinas?
There, with the breakdown, Mr. Villarreal, we did run a report from July since the fiscal year began and, uh, the only additional, we call them conditionals, not from the board level, since those positions were approved by the board, but we call them additional within internal procedures, that we did not wanna hire those people, but we did have to accordingly. And there was 12 maintenance substitutes that did stand out that internally were not...
So we hired 12 maintenance substitutes?
Yes, sir. And, uh, six tutors that come out from the general fund. The other tutors are dispersed through Title I, ESL Bilingual and other sub pops through the finance program. Um, so those are the, those are the additional positions, I could say, Mr. Villarreal, that, that were, did not wanna, we did not wanna hire going into the new fiscal year, but we did.
And, Mr. Villarreal, uh, just to add, um, I did see the report because, uh, we sent that information to Mr. Jay Peña. And the majority, Mr. Dr. Salinas, the majority are replacements. Um, and like Mr. Dr. Salinas mentioned, 12, uh, were newly, uh, maintenance workers and we did mention that, you know, we were going to hire a few for, uh, disinfecting crew. And then, of course, the six to eight of those maintenance individuals are on FMLA, so we, you know, hired the substitutes to, uh, make sure that they provided the services of those individuals. And the five tutors were hired, um, because we needed, um, those tutors to help supervise the students that actually came onto campus. Uh, but for the majority, uh, Mr....
So let me ask you, uh, the people that are replacements, who exactly got hired as those replacements? Can you go through a breakdown?
Sure.